and safeguard our emergency responders and those people who are out in the snow today. We ask God that there would be a moment in everyone's life to encounter your goodness in this place. Father, we are so grateful for what you are doing. We pray, God, that there be peace over this county in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Follow me in the light of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove from the consent agenda action item in voice over 5,000 skirt technologies.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as amended.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
To Mr. Reporter.
All right. So we received a lot of thank yous from the community regarding restore in Zoom. There are people on Zoom, as you can see, so thank you for all the comments regarding that process. On Friday, I received a request regarding whether or not we could add the RV revised code onto the agenda. I am going to request that go on the agenda for this Tuesday. And then, as an FYI, on Fridays is a day where I'm physically in the community, so if you have a request of me specifically, if you call or text and I can make sure to address it, otherwise email is spotty on Fridays. But that did go to the whole board, and I noticed it wasn't on this particular agenda. I want to give an update on the Daily Bee. The Daily Bee will no longer deliver the newspaper to the convenience store in Blanchard, Idaho. They will offer home delivery, and there will be the option for the online e-dition. The mailing cost to have a newspaper mailed daily is, on average, $3. So my second update is the policy workshop that was on the transparency piece that was in 404. Commissioner Almott requested a workshop. All three commissioners did attend the workshop. There was not agreement to add the transparency from the perspective of a department head that reaches out to a commissioner that during this meeting they would give a report out to the community regarding that content. There was not agreement from the board to move forward with that policy, so it was removed from this particular business meeting because they felt that it wasn't necessary. I still hold that it would be transparent for us to do that. During that workshop, there was a real-time example of a department head presenting an issue and concern, and it was deliberated, and I comment on had that been exposed to the full board, the recommendation that I would have given was to update a particular policy to address their concern. In real time, HR took that information, and they are going to update that policy. That's what we're missing when we're not transparent as a board, but that was the decision moving forward, and so I will leave that part at that. With respect to relationship building for the month of February, I focused on Fish and Game. We had a really good relationship. They're very responsive to our department. They have actually volunteered to come to our board meetings and give us an update as the board sees necessary about what's going on in Fish and Game. They are doing that in Boundary County, and so I think that would be great if our board would agree to invite Fish and Game in. They're also available to come in and just do education for our community members as a whole. And so their goal is to help us with their focus and as it pertains to our county. So that was a very beneficial month of working with that particular group, and thank you to everybody from Fish and Game that actually participated in our workshops. They read everything that we send them, and they make thoughtful responses. They very clearly are telling us, they're not trying to dictate what we do, they're just trying to make sure we have the necessary information. Can-Handle Health and DEQ are going to be the departments that I work on for this month. I'm going to work with Duffy. We have water and sewer that are always at the top of our concerns, especially as we deal with planning and zoning. Those two departments are agreeable to working through our issues and concerns, so if community members have some specific questions that you'd like to make sure that I address as I meet with these groups for this month, feel free to shoot me an email so that when I give a report out, I can give you guys updates. That way, it's the best use of everybody's time. With respect to Commissioner Community Roundtable, I will complete Old Town this Thursday. The next community that I'm going to be in is Clark Fork and Hope, Idaho. That will take place on March 24th at their senior center. If anybody wants to participate, feel free to come. They do serve their community at 11:00 a.m. on that day. Volunteers are always welcome, and I will be meeting throughout that community regarding their issues and concerns. As we look to March and April of what's going on, tomorrow is the Regional Behavioral Health Meeting. Everybody is allowed to participate with that. If you have an issue that you'd want to address even as a community member, or you just want to hear what's going on with behavioral health, you can log in on Zoom or actually go down to the Hayden office. It's tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00. If you have that interest, you can let me know, and I can send you the Zoom link. On March 2nd is the Old Town Community Commissioner Roundtable. On March 23rd, we're going to host in our building the standard advanced open meeting training and education that is offered through the Idaho Association of Counties. That's a free webinar that the community can have access to, so we're going to host it in this building. We're going to have our risk department, our human resources department, as well as legal available to ask any questions after. We'll also give you a handout of the ICrimp documentation on advanced open meeting. That way, you guys have the tool to understand what we should be doing from that end, and I will stress that it does not cost anything. The time is 9:00 a.m. Pacific Standard Time. April 17th, we're going to hold a community engagement, and so this is designed for planning and commission to come and present to the community as a whole regarding high level comp plan, regarding LUPA, and regulatory taking. Those three topics have been circulating in our community a lot, and we always have kind of a little bit of a back and forth on what can planning do versus LUPA. And so it was an idea to kind of help have a meeting of the minds within the community to get some questions regarding the structure. It's not intended to specifically address our comp plan. It's intended to get the information of what they are doing. So when we're looking at their revisions, we have a foundation from which we're addressing our questions so that it's productive, and we can further that comp plan instead of have too many upsets and not pushing things forward. As far as what I work on, I sit on a couple of boards that I wanted to remind the community. I sit on the Regional Behavioral Health Board, the CAT Board, the Intergovernmental Affairs with the IAC, and the Infrastructure and Transportation with IAC. Idaho Association of Counties is a free resource to everybody in the community. So if you want to see what we're learning when we go to these workshops, you actually can pull it up, and the PowerPoints are right there. And so if you have any questions regarding resources, that's a really good resource to use for a lot of the things that we're working on. So that is my report for what has happened in February and the look forward of what we'll be working on in March. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, District 3.
Mr. Chairman, I have been asked to chair, and I have chaired, the BCAT meeting, which is the Bonner County Area Transportation Team. Our February meeting was canceled because of inclement weather. This evening, I will be traveling as the legislative representative for the Idaho Association of Counties to Boise, and I will be returning tomorrow. So I'm going to miss the employee appreciation breakfast tomorrow, and I just want to make clear to everybody, in my two months, I have been extremely impressed with the diligence and hard work of our employees. They are not always appreciated by some, but they do a tough job, and that's part of public service. In regards to my legislative committee, there's been some rumblings out and about of what that is. Well, I'll just describe for the public what happened. I stepped out at our IAC District 1 legislative meeting to utilize the facilities, and I came back in, and someone said, Luke, raise your hand, you really want to do this. And I raised my hand, and then I found out afterwards that it meant that I've been traveling to Boise twice a month during the legislative session. I'm excited about it because what it does is for the five northern counties, I get to represent and have a conversation with other members of the Idaho Association of Counties. It's not just commissioners. It's clerks, it's assessors, it's attorneys, it's sheriffs. It's all of the above, and we go down and we determine what is best for counties at the local level. And I'll give you a very simple example. Legislators often have a conversation. There are three competing tax relief bills on property taxes. I don't like paying property taxes as an individual. However, I like having my roads plowed and maintained. When a legislator discusses cutting your taxes, what it means at the county level is what services are you going to cut? And that's a difficult conversation, and being down there enables Bonner County to have someone who will walk to the courthouse and be able to have those conversations. In regards to what it costs this county, the county pays dues as a member of this association, and that is spread out over the membership of Region 1. That's what I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we will move into public comment, and going into that, I will say you will keep it directed to the point that it will not be a question and answer session, will not be a discussion session. If you have something to say, you may say it. I'm going to give 12 minutes total, and because we have a lot on there, and we're going to move forward. If you get derogatory, personal attacks, anything like that, I will stop you. We will go to the next person. And so long as we are good with that, we will continue to have public comment. If not, I'll stop it altogether. So for Doug and Maureen, you got your hand up. You've got $8,700 for facilities under heating and cooling. One of the heaters went out. Roden Bridge has $60,881.17 for culverts, and then $5,087.50 for geotextile fabric, which I'm guessing is rope fabric. And that's all the over $5,000. So at this time, Dave Bowman.
Good morning. Dave Bowman, for the record. Chairman Bradshaw, when you were sworn in last January, you went into great detail about how you were going to make sure that the metric for this board and decision-making was going to be lawful, not legal. And you pointed out the difference, that legal means you comply with the letter of the law, and lawful means that you're going to make moral decisions in the eyes of God and the people. I think that from what I've seen so far, really, it's been neither. When Mr. Cardona gave his presentation two weeks ago, I pointed out that the services he was trying to sell this county are already provided by the prosecutor and by IAC and by ICrimp, and they're already paid for in our tax dollars. Last week, I pointed out that the decision that was made to go into a contract with Davilier, and it was a contract in the board motion, not a proposal, was unlawful per Article 18, Section 6 of the Idaho Constitution. Your response to me at that time was that you, and I'm going to guess probably Davilier, had figured out a way around that by doing it administratively. So rather than retract the decision, you find a way to work around it. Also, last week, Tricia Bowlen here courageously stood up here and pointed out the conflict of interest with your campaign contributions and this decision campaign contributions from Mr. Cardona, Mr. Wentz, and you said to her it didn't matter because those donations were for your gubernatorial campaign, and you're a commissioner. Well, I'm here to tell you it does matter. The whole episode reeks of lack of transparency, influence peddling, and you've insulted the very people that you're here to serve. So to that end, I have filed a criminal complaint with the State Attorney General's Special Prosecutions Unit and the Bonner County Prosecutor, calling for an investigation of the pecuniary transactions between you and George Wentz, you and Mauricio Cardona of Davilier Law Group, and I'm citing both state and federal criminal code. The people of Bonner County have had it to here with the lack of transparency of the previous board, the cronyism, and lack of respect for the people, at least of the previous board and two-thirds of this board. We are over it, and we're going to clean this county up, and this is just the start. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Can I ask you, you stated what Doug and Maureen wanted, but they might have something else to say.
We'll get the ones on the list first. Phil Randy.
Hello.
It's you, Mr. Stoltz.
Just a couple of quick things. I could question the Davilier proposal from a couple of weeks ago, but because it seems more properly placed in the Civil Division of the County Prosecutor's Office, but we'll leave that for another day. I just wanted to rise and state that I appreciated the restoration of Zoom last week. I think the people that are on Zoom today probably appreciated not having to come out in this weather. I appreciated the openness to public comment that was present in last week's meeting. I appreciated the increase of decorum and collegiality and the decrease of acrimony among the board, and I hope that we will continue to see an increase in openness and transparency as we continue to work together to move the county, as we work as a county, to move the people's business forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy. And Ms. Trish.
Good morning. Tricia Bowlen, for the record. I just had a quick question.
Can I ask you to slide closer and speak louder?
Yes, ma'am.
The Zoom world wants to hear you.
Excuse me. I was wondering if Commissioner Bradshaw could tell us more about the boards that he serves on? I'd be really curious to hear that at some meeting in the future. And I was curious, too, if those meetings that you're talking about in Boise, could you do them on Zoom? Because it would save us a lot of money, probably, instead of flying back and forth twice a month, in light of inflation and our property taxes all have gone up. Be nice to make some cuts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Doug, you got your hand up. Are you out there?
Hello? Can you hear me? Can you? I can't hear you now.
Hey, can you hear me?
Ah, there we go. Incidentally, thank you for addressing the things that I was going to ask under the consent agenda, but I was actually trying to get Maureen some comments on the public comment section of the agenda. Here she is.
Yes, Maureen Patterson, for the record. I just wanted to thank District 2 and 3 commissioners for having their reports because I think that's very valuable, and I appreciate it very much.
Anybody else got your hand up? Grant. Name for the record.
Grant Dorman, for the record. I just wanted to make you guys aware, I'm not sure if you are, House Bill 85 is up for debate, is being debated on the floor. HB 85 is basically a bill that will, as you guys know, for the DMV, the commissioners set the administrative fees for registration, but the state tax commission sets the fees for titling. And with their move towards online registration and mail-in registration, that has, a lot of our business has been taken to Boise, lowering our funds, meaning we have to, a lot of the work that is remaining is with the titling function, but they retain right now the ability to control those fees. This House bill will then put that in the hand, allow the commissioners in the future, if it's passed, to set the titling fees. So every county, based on the operational cost of each county, will be able to set their titling fees, and I think it's a good proposal to take that, the pricing mechanism to each county so we can price those appropriately. So when you're in Boise, Mr. Almott, I would encourage you to support HB 85. I think it's a good move, so anyway.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to our assessor?
Yep.
Thank you. The IAC has already taken a position in support of this, and we will continue speaking as the legislative committee there. We have advocated, and we are advocating for that because it keeps local control, Mr. Dorman.
Okay.
So that's already, it's already in process, and I believe that we will reaffirm, especially after you've told me that that's what you would like us to do.
Yep. And also, Ms. Williams and Mr. Bradshaw, emails or communication with legislators for your personal support as commissioners, not just through IAC, would also be appreciated. So that's all I have.
I texted them last night.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Reg. Reg Crawford.
I was waiting to be unmuted. Reg Crawford, Sam Point, Idaho. I'd like to agree with people and say thank you for reinstating Zoom. I really appreciate that. And I'd like to say that I did, during last week's business meeting, email all the commissioners, Prosecutor Louis Marshall and Attorney Bill Wilson about the conflict of interest of the donations, and I didn't receive a response from anybody. And then I'd like to say separately on today's consent agenda, there is a minor land division that was submitted in November 2020, and I'm assuming that they've updated the information on it because, like, the RP number, everything on it is old, and the RP doesn't exist anymore. And so it would be great to see in the future more attention paid to the process for these minor land divisions, and if they're going next to other land divisions, it's an issue I'd like you to discuss in the future with the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bradshaw, can I answer one of Reg's comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Crawford, with respect to the emails that you sent about the conflict of interest, because it was a legal issue, it was sent over to legal, which that has been addressed. It's just not right for me as a commissioner to tell you and answer. It's for the legal team, but we're going to address, the Davilier question is on this agenda that we're going to actually get to a little bit farther down the line.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of the agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Good morning, commissioners. Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Roden Bridge Department. We opened bids on February 13th for our annual rock crushing projects, and those bids were split up between the three different road districts, so we had bid opening for each district. In District 1, we had two bidders, and the low bid was Peak Sand and Gravel Incorporated in the amount of $582,025. And this bid was to obtain two and a half inch base rock, three-quarter inch minus gravel, the chips for doing chip seals, and anti-skid sand. And we recommend awarding the contract for the rock crushing to Peak Sand and Gravel for their bid amounts.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the contract for 2023 rock crushing, District 1 be awarded to Peak Sand and Gravel Incorporated for the unit prices listed on the bid submittal form for a total amount of $582,025.
I second the motion.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
For District 2, we are only putting out the bid for chips this year, and we received one bid from Woods Crushing and Hauling for the amount of $79,200 to obtain 3,300 tons of chips, and so we recommend awarding the bid to Woods Crushing and Hauling to best serve the county.
I move that we contract for 2023 rock crushing, District 2 be awarded to Woods Crushing and Hauling, Inc., for the unit prices listed on the bid submittal form for the total amount of $79,200, and authorize the board to sign the contract.
I second the motion.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And for Road District 3, we put out a bid again for three-quarter minus gravel, rock chips, base rock, and anti-skid traction sand, and we had two bidders, and the low bid in this case was Peak Sand and Gravel Incorporated for an amount of $633,383.00. We recommend awarding the contract to them to best serve the county.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the contract for 2023 rock crushing, District 3 be awarded to Peak Sand and Gravel Incorporated for the unit prices listed on the bid submittal form for a total amount of $633,383, and to authorize the board to sign the contract.
I second the motion.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Fourth item. Traditionally, every year, we have put out a bid for our liquid asphalt supply that we use liquid asphalt for doing chip seals and BST projects and things of that nature. Last year, we went a different route, and we went through a more complex bid proposal process where we rank bidders not just on their low price, but also on the quality of the material that they're supplying, the quality of the contractor, how well they've worked with the county, the warranty they offer, and factors such as that, and going through that proposal ranking process with a group of county employees to determine who was going to be the best bidder to supply that product and not have issues with it. So last year, we awarded the contract to Ergon, and part of the contract states that we can continue to extend that contract annually in one-year increments, up to four times for five years total, because it's so much work to go through this proposal ranking process rather than just opening low bids. So Ergon is interested in extending the contract this year. The Roden Bridge Department is interested in extending the contract, and the contract further dictates that the price will follow the Idaho Transportation Department's asphalt index and be adjusted proportionally. So last year, the bid price for CMS 2P and HFE 150 oil gradations was $705 per ton. With the decrease in oil prices and the asphalt index, the price for this year, if the contract is extended, would be $594.10, and we recommend that the board approve this change order number one to extend the contract for the 2023 season.
Based upon the information before us, I move to approve change order number one for the 2022 liquid asphalt contract, extending the contract for 2023 at the revised unit price shown for a total contract increase of $892,203.37.
I second the motion.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Steve.
Good morning, everyone, commissioners.
Good morning.
Cindy Binkert, for the record, HR. We have quite a bit for today. I'll get closer to the mic, hopefully everyone can hear me. The first one is a staffing request to Court Clerk 3 and a request to recruit for a vacated position.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve commencing with approval of the following vacated position. Court Clerk 3, courts effective February 28th, 2023.
I second the motion.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have a series of policies that we are requesting approval on. Most of these are what we would call kind of like general housekeeping, just kind of cleaning up our policies from time to time to make sure that they're compliant. The first one we have is the grievance procedure, Policy 900. We're requesting approval for that policy. It includes general policy language clarification. It now includes some steps for reporting along with a form. This policy was created and last reviewed in January of 2013.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Ms. Binkert some questions?
Yes, you may.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Binkert, as I was looking at our policy manual, and it starts with this policy, the personal policy is not a contract. No contract or employment with Bonner County will be invalid unless it is expressly approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And it goes on to say that elected officials and unelected department heads may only adopt department-specific personal policies after they have been reviewed by the Human Resource Department and approved by the BOC
and approved by the B O C C as being consistent and compatible with the Board of County Commissioners' master personnel policy. So one of the things I was interested in is there's been so much renewed interest on transparency is, well, in the development of these policies, we've had a workshop and I've had a number of employees and a couple of elected officials who have come and spoken with me with some, some concerns. And that is in the ability of our employees to have engagement and how that will affect their jobs. So one of these I'm curious about, as we're going to get into some later agenda items, is were these policies created in-house or were they created and reviewed by outside counsel?
Both.
Can we speak to the outside counsel that has done so and why we would do that instead of utilizing our local prosecutor?
We do use our local prosecutor for some of the day-to-day things. But anything for policy-related, we send that out to an employment law specialist that, that does this every day. And I've worked with the prosecutor's office and they've agreed that a best practice would be to make sure that we have an employment specialist review these policies.
And how many employment law specialists are we utilizing in this review? And why are they being paid per hour from county, local taxpayer funds?
You know, I don't know the, I don't have that with me, the rate, but what was your question again besides the?
Well, I'm just wondering, where, well, I want to, who are these particular specialists?
We use Witherspoon Kelly, a law firm. And that's Cara Hickla that has signed off on this policy. And we've used her since two thousand fifteen.
Okay, how about Heather Yackley?
We do not use, we use Heather Yackley for other things, but not for policy review.
And Buck Alter?
Are we talking about the grievance procedure policy right now?
Yeah, I'm kind of confused.
Well, it's all of the above, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just.
Hi, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we can't hear you on Zoom anymore.
Back. That seems repetitive. Yeah. But if you want to hold another workshop, we can do that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Uh huh.
How much have we spent with Sky Mercer over the last four years?
Um, I don't, I don't have that with me.
A lot. Probably add up to her declared salary every year. We pay her a lot of money through review and update our policies.
Uh, she.
Or are we paying somebody else in addition to that?
I have a question. Are we, are, is this really about the policies or is this about a human resources process and procedure? Because we're not on the agenda. The agenda item that we're on right now is the policy update that has been, it's gone through workshop, it's gone through legal, and the question that we're supposed to be discussing is, do we approve it, deny it, or are we going to table it? This discussion is moving into a human resources job function discussion, which is disinnenuous. If that, if you guys want to ask those questions, I respectfully request that the board put that as a different agenda item to discuss the process and procedure of human resources, how we update, how we contract with legal and not use a human resources item to change the topic. Because that is not what she's standing here for. And it's not fair to a county employee to be essentially put on the stand for an issue that's not on this agenda.
Mr. Wilson. So I, I can't, this is Bill Wilson for the record, and I can't speak to every issue you guys have raised, but I do want to address the reason that we use Cara for these, for these, uh, these policies. So with the exception of the whistleblower policy that is rooted in Idaho state law, a lot of these employment, the policies reflect federal law. And Cara's got three decades of experience litigating these issues. I do have my share of experience in these, mainly from the investigation front-end side. But the, when we create policies that are going to be long-lasting, like I think you said, some of these, the last ones we, we looked at were seven or eight years ago. That's why we use Cara, because I think she was even an H R specialist herself before she became an attorney. So in my opinion, that is money that's incredibly well-spent. And she, having her give us draft policies on the front end is, is something that is something I really support. And I, I am a fan of hers. So I hope that answers the question as to who we're using and why. As far as, I, I think that's about my only contribution. Did you have any other questions for me while I'm up here?
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how we know which. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm trying to just understand, Bill, what we deter, oh, Mr. Roseville, which, which policies we use and when we use the prosecutor for certain for, for what elements of county business?
Sure. So, I mean, we do that, it's, each, each case is unique. When we have to make a decision as to whether or not we can handle something in-house or we need to use an outside specialist, each decision has to be made on the merits of whatever is before us. And I think that we've, for this particular issue, for the drafting of policies, we've, we've, like I said, we've used Cara now for
Since two thousand fifteen.
Seven, eight years. So that's a pretty subtle practice for this one.
Thank you.
Mr. Roseville, Mr. Chairman.
Morning, commissioners and Cindy. Mike Roseville for the record. I want to start by saying I, I don't see anything necessarily wrong with any of the policies. And I also understand your concerns. What I would like to do is when we had that workshop, we were able to look at them for about thirty minutes and then we had to give our copies back. Thirty minutes for all those different policies isn't really a good time to be able to chew and mull over them and compare them. And I don't know how long you've been working on these for a month or two or, or whatever it is. And then for the rest of every, all of us to be able to make a determination in a matter of, you know, five minutes or less per policy. I don't know how we can do that. What I would like is if we could get a copy of the policies and look at them and then, and then come back. That's, that'd be great. Thank you. Also, also one more thing is if we could actually cite the state law in the federal law with each policy, that would also be great. So we can cross reference.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. So at this time, I'd take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to table grievance procedure policy nine hundred until all staff can provide an update and staff is happy with that policy.
So I have a comment on this. I, all staff being able to comment means you will not update something. And one of the things I think should be considered is we have people whose function is human resources, and that's her job. And for anybody that went to one of these workshops, which some of these are two weeks, three weeks, four weeks old, employees can always go, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, to human resources and say, hey, can I see that update? And then go on the internet and look at the current policy that is in place. And so to say that there's more, there needs to be more time for all of the community that's an employee of the county signs off on a policy, that's not how policies are updated because, and you don't typically put the law in your policy because things do change, which is, it points back to why we use an attorney who specializes in policy updating for a business. And so if you're going to table all of these for additional input for employees, it, I think you need to give a specific date and time, but consider the ramifications of telling human resources policies don't get updated until the population signs off, because we did a workshop. And so that was an opportunity to do that. Questions could have, and I don't recall, did you, did you receive any input from, for example, Mr. Roseville saying, can I see that policy? And have a compare contrast before today?
The, the only one I had feedback from and have had dialogue on is Jason Talk.
Okay. And did you get him the necessary information?
Yes.
In enough time?
Well, we actually just briefed this morning on a couple of things, but other than that, we've had ongoing conversations. And then with the drug-free workplace policy, we have the Sheriff's Office, EMS, Justice Services, quite a few groups were involved in the creation of that policy because they are considered safety-sensitive positions.
Do you have any outstanding responses due to anybody in the community regarding the policies?
Not that I recall, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Bring it back to point of order. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I will step down from the chair in a second. All in favor?
Roll call vote.
Aye.
No.
People. Aye. Okay. Actually, I mean, okay. Next time.
So the next one is in rules of employee conduct, and that is again, just general cleanup. There's no substantial changes to that policy. Just includes cleanup around performance and behavior, just language cleanup, workplace conduct, and prohibited behavior. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table rule of employee conduct policy four hundred until the B O C C is satisfied that it's ready for approval.
Do I have a second? I will step down from the chair in a second.
I would like to give a comment. That's a very open-ended until the B O C C has decided we have business that needs to come back. I recommend that you revise to be more specific of when the policy can be updated, because you run the risk of being out of compliance.
All in favor? Roll call vote.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is discriminatory workplace harassment. That is just general language cleanup. We just expanded the language to delineate what would be constituted as sexual harassment, and that's the only change to that policy.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table discriminatory workplace harassment policy and complaint procedure one thousand one. Indefinitely.
I do not believe we can do that legally. You have to have an anti-discrimination policy.
We have a policy. This is an update. I'm moving to wait until that we have received further information. So yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to table this indefinitely.
Do we have a second? I'll step down from the chair in a second. Roll call vote.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
All right, the next one is a new policy. We, I referenced that earlier, whistleblower policy twenty-five twenty-five. And that's been recommended by legal to have a specific policy to that, even though it's defined in the law. This policy is just basically drafted off of the regulatory guidelines.
Mr. Chairman.
I would like to have a discussion on this one, please.
Well, I could make a motion and then there could be a second and followed by discussion. But I, I defer.
Go ahead. So this particular policy, I think, is necessary for our county. I don't think we have the time to delay. We have a number of people that have raised issues and concerns, and I think this is in part of cleaning up some of our county business as a whole. Um, this was a gap that was identified by council. And I will point out, I find it concerning on some of this that sometimes we say we want to follow council and then following, updating our policies and procedures, which is, these are very very specific topics. They're not a, a lot of interpretation that we would make a decision to not update policies. We have to give a structure for county employees and we should be updating policies regularly. So I don't, if you guys want to table all of them, fine, but I think you should reconsider the whistleblower policy because we do not have one. And we have issues with that in the county.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may.
I agree with Commissioner Williams that it's concerning, but as an individual, considering the amount of outside counsel that is being paid, which as has been made apparent by last week's agenda items, I don't know which council that I'm following at this time, which we will be following or addressing momentarily. And the whistleblower conduct is concerning, and it has been brought up to me by a number of employees. And I would like to do it right the first time. I think that best serves the public, and I just don't know that we're there yet. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I move to table whistleblower policy two-five-two-five indefinitely.
Do we have a second? I will step down from the chair in a second. Roll call vote.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Okay. And the last one is drug-free workplace policy has an addendum one thousand three point one, which would be D O T specific. And this policy actually has had a lot of work done on it. The last it was reviewed and approved was January of two thousand six. It is out of compliance. Our current policy is out of compliance with D O T, though we are in compliance with D O T because we follow the guidelines with that. And this has been reviewed both in the workshop and we've had focus groups with key stakeholders, and we reviewed this in executive session with the board.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with the director of Road and Bridge yesterday, and there are some changes, and he's here, so he can nod if I'm, I don't want to misrepresent any part of our conversation. But there's some challenges with this policy. And specifically, there are some dollar limits, and in the way this is done, that could result in us not keeping our roads maintained to a certain degree. Because a thousand dollars worth of damage to a vehicle does not take anything. A tow bill, if a truck goes into the road, is a thousand dollars. A tow bill, if a truck goes into the road is a thousand dollars and this will more or less stop the process. On my return, Mister Chairman, from my last, uh, and the only IAC trip, which is made, my vehicle was broken into, my window was bashed and they stole, uh, my groceries and my luggage. A broken window cost over a thousand dollars on a mid-sized pickup. What this would result in would be if a driver goes in the ditch, then we have to call a tow truck. Then we have to bring a supervisor out and we have to check. I think that there is room for us to improve this policy and I just don't believe that it's ready. So specifically in regards to, uh, revision drug and alcohol policy one zero zero three. I move to table this policy indefinitely.
Uh, if I could just add something, Jason and I talked about that this morning. Uh, and the only change we need is on page three of the all employ uh, to just say for Roden Bridge, just refer to policy, uh, one thousand three point one, and that's would suffice.
But is that in what, is that in the packet that's presented before us today?
Uh, no, not that section.
So we could do this one next week. It'd be great with that.
It's minimal.
We can bring that back next. I'm willing to bring them all back next week after we've gone through the process. I'm not, I still.
Say some things and please.
But I would bring back next week with the, uh, written document, then you go and sign it. Great. So Mister Chairman, I move to table drug and alcohol policy one zero zero three until it is put back on the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to amend the motion to bring policy, uh, back on the agenda on Tuesday, not until we put it back, but to be specific that it has to come back on Tuesday, March seventh, seventh.
Do we have a second on the amendment?
I would second the amendment.
Okay, we have first and second roll call vote.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Item favorite airport. Dave Schuster, you out there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent Commissioners, thank you for your time. I have one item for you today and that is a request to advertise for engineering consultant services. In accordance with the FAA regulations, Bonner County as airport sponsors are required to solicit the market for engineering consulting services every five years. The five-year period is now due for both our airports, so we need to advertise a request for qualifications for engineering services. We will then follow the FAA guidelines on selection procedures, select a consultant from the responsive candidates and enter into a master contract for services under which we will develop and implement the capital improvement projects as set forth in the most recent capital improvement plans for our airports. I recommend approving this request.
Based on the information before us, you moved that Bonner County approved this request to advertise for engineering consulting services.
I second the motion.
Okay, first and second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Well, that was it. Okay, first, Mike Rosell.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning, everybody.
My name is Fred Amant for the record. I'm just wondering, you passed the amendment to bring revision back on Tuesday, but you didn't vote on the motion. Is that required?
Oh, we did.
Yeah.
We voted on the amendment, Mister Chairman.
Oh, okay. So, only amended a motion.
So.
No.
So, we're going back, Mister Chairman, I believe, to item six regarding the revision, the drug and alcohol policy. We have voted on the amendment. What we need to do, I believe, is to vote on the main motion, Mister Chairman.
Okay.
I know, but I'm not, we're trying to sound.
Do we have a second?
Well, it can just fail. I mean, I, if you don't second it, it'll fail and then you're done.
Okay. Motion pass. It gets paid. All right.
Let us have a care. Hello again, everybody. Mike Rosell for the record. Um, before you, I have, um, a request for waterways. Waterways over the past five or six years has, um, been budgeting more revenue than they've received. Waterways revenue comes in the spring and summer months when the boaters, you know, license their boats. Uh, but at the meantime, uh, Pete runs his department all year long based on those fees. So he's actually budgeting and the revenue comes at the end. Every year over the past five years or so, uh, they've been budgeting more than they brought in. So the balance has been going down and down and down. Uh, to make Pete whole, what we want to do is use some of the interest on our ARPA funds, which, uh, are usable for general business purposes and the local tribal consistency funds, which you can use for general government services as well, excuse me, totaling seventy thousand, so forty from the ARPA interest, thirty from the local tribal con, uh, consistency funds. Um, those going into the waterways would set them up to survive the rest of this year. And then when his lot of fees come in this year, it can roll over. So if he budgets properly, um, which, you know, he's been doing the best he can, no, no knocks on that at all, but we're going to have to budget very conservatively on revenues for Pete. Uh, this should set him up. So, and this doesn't raise taxes at all. So I have a motion for you, a memo, a resolution doing just that. I can read the resolution. If you'd like, it's long, but it gets, basically it does what I just said. It's moving it from those into the waterways.
So you're recommending we do this?
I do, I do.
Mister Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, authorizing the clerk to cancel the transfer cash of seventy thousand dollars from the grant fund forty-seven dash two-two-zero-zero to the waterways fund zero-three-eight dash five-five-zero-zero.
I second the motion.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you, Michael. Bonner County Sheriff's Office. Mister Roar, how are you today?
Just fine. How are you guys doing today?
No, we.
Roar Lakeville for the record. Uh, so Commissioners, before you, uh, I have a, uh, for a grant approval, Idaho Transportation Parks and Recreation, IDPR, provides assistance, uh, to counties throughout recreational public safety program, RBS. Funds are intended to assist in safety programs and enforcement of the Safe Voting Act. Bonner County Sheriff's Office has been allotted one hundred five, eight hundred, one thousand dollars in RBS funding for federal fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The IDPR requires a fifty percent match, which equates to fifty-two thousand nine hundred and one dollars drawn from the marine vessel account. Expenses related to this grant must be incurred between October first, twenty twenty-two and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve and sign the recreational voting safety grant agreement to the Bonner County Sheriff's Office in the amount of one hundred and five thousand eight hundred and one dollars and approve the county's match of fifty-two thousand nine hundred and one dollars from the marine vessel accounts.
I second the motion.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Roar. Prosecutors office. For Reagan.
Good morning Commissioners, Bill Wilson for the record. Before you, is a memorandum of understanding that I've drafted, uh, that's proposed to be, uh, kind of codify an agreement between this board and the fair board. And the purpose of the MOU is to clarify the respective rights and obligations that both boards possess. It was prompted by recent developments at the fairgrounds, which caused us to reexamine the statutory authority for the fair board and for the Board of County Commissioners. And to kind of clearly delineate, uh, which board has authority for certain roles. And so this MOU essentially codifies the relationship that has already existed between the two boards with a few notable exceptions. Namely, uh, the MOU does call out the fair board's right to, um, main or to, to manage, hire and supervise employees at the fairgrounds. That's one important component. Um, and then there are other portions of the MOU that go through the, uh, services that the county would continue to off, to offer the fairgrounds, including legal advice, IT, um, risk management and insurance and those sorts of things. So the goal again is to kind of codify the relationship between the two boards and hopefully uh, ensure the smooth operation of the fairgrounds and I, that, what, what everybody wants to see continue out there. So happy to take any questions on it if you guys have those one.
Can I just clarify for the record one thing? After speaking with Fair Board, the, we removed like specific sheriff versus admin IT, but they still would have the ability to use the IT with, um, that the sheriff is using. It's just we don't have a sheriff IT and admin IT. We just have IT because that was one of the concerns that they had and my understanding was we were just specifically not naming who IT would be because that could change. And so we were just writing an MOU.
I think in the negotiation component of this, yeah, um, that I think that this board had voiced some concern with calling out fair or, uh, law enforcement IT in that MOU. And so the, the change was made to just um, to omit the reference to that and say the provision of IT. And I think that was, um, something that this board, uh, asked for. So that's in the final version. Um, again, this, the way this is drafted is that it has to be approved by both boards and they haven't done that yet. Um, I thought this board could lead, um, and get this, this side of the agreement struck. And then it'll be up to the fair board, uh, at a future meeting to decide if they want to accept the version that you guys hopefully approved today.
And this is in an effort to help them move forward because they are autonomous in a lot of ways. Um, and they get to select a lot more than they have been allowed to.
That's right. It's a I don't want to get too far into the weeds for those of you who probably haven't been following along, but um, the fair board is kind of a unique creature in Idaho law. It's not the typical, um, advisory board that's entirely dependent on this board for its existence, um, but it is kind of a hybrid. Um, there's, has a foot in both camps. Like it's not an independent taxing district, but it, um, uh, it has some authority to enter into contracts to manage employees that would typically be associated with uh, an independent taxing district. So we're just trying to iron that, that, um, kind of iron those, those issues out and the MOU is the first step in making that happen. And I also want to say while I'm up here, uh, Nancy Twynham is our comptroller and she has also been really instrumental in this process. Um, she, for example, that you, you'll see on the back of the MOU, there's an incorporation by reference to the Bonner County Claims Policy. Um, and we want to kind of let the fair board adopt that. So we have a uniform, um, you know, financial reporting mechanisms. And Nancy was the one to suggest that and she's also been really active uh, with the fair board, helping them get their house in order. And so I want to give her a shameless, uh, plug while I'm up here.
Well, thank you Nancy for your work because that's been really helpful to them and they have voiced their appreciation for all you've been doing.
And this is, this is something that has to be done in order for the fair board to get past everything that's happened over the last six months and and get compliant with state.
Sure.
And, uh, so, yeah, it's something that just need to get done so that that process can continue.
Mister Chairman, it's also appropriate to recognize Cindy Binkert's effort to help clean up the job descriptions because literally when we're talking about the fair, it's lions, tigers and bears, oh my cotton candy, all sorts of stuff and lots and lots of fertilizer, um, as it should be. And Cindy's help and assistance in that is, is going to smooth that process. Assembly is an important, important stuff that needs to be undertaken.
I move that we approve the MOU. Well, I don't have savings.
I would second the motion.
All right, go first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Aye. Oh, yeah. Some of it still gets printed that way. They draw a line through it and put my name in it.
All right.
Mr. Ray.
Is there any public comment or questions on that one?
Oh.
All right. Okay, I am bringing back the issue, um, regarding the board's decision to engage Davelier Law Group. I am first going to ask, is there any conflict of interest in this discussion?
Yes, there is. I will recuse myself because of the conflict of interest, uh, because of an accident accusation and a point that Mister Bowman has brought up and, uh, he believes in fair and fair and right is right. And so Commissioner Williams, do you know who Matt McDonald is? And who his employer is?
Um, yes, I know Matt McDonald is.
Okay, do you know that he gave to your campaign?
Yeah.
And he works for George Wentz.
Okay.
Do you have a conflict?
I don't. I would have to ask Bill Wilson if there.
Interesting concept.
Look, so we don't have to remove to be negative. Like we can, I'm doing the right thing by saying Bill Wilson. If a Matt McDonald, which I thought he used to be employed, he was part of the central committee. Um, because we're not hiring, in my understanding, this is not hiring, he's hiring. The issue was they voted to hire Mauricio for a training program.
Okay, so, um, we're kind of I'm addressing this for the first time today. Didn't realize that that was going to be an issue. So let's see what we can do shooting from the head.
It's easy. If you say yes, they can't hire because you don't have a.
Right. So I, I mean, I my, the thing is, I, I do actually know who Matt McDonald is. Um, friend of mine coached my kids' football team, um, he's a great football coach. Um, but, um, I don't know what his employment relationship is to Davelier or if he works there or not. Um, so really hard for me to say. Um, if, if there was a if, let's say he did hypothetically, um, he works for.
Early.
Okay, um, well, in that case, um, I think that we have, there's something where it says it's a red flag. I don't know if, I can't give you a clear cut answer on this.
So could I have a suggestion? That is it reasonable for the board to void the decision that was made last week because you cannot have a form if you bring up those two items?
It would certainly, it would certainly be the safest thing to do.
Well, that.
It, what my suggestion would be that at this point, right, while we, we're trying to figure out some, some serious issues. Um, I think you can, the board can always return to this issue at its discretion and, and decide to, um, actually uh, engage Davelier or, or agree to, um, to some provision of training. Um, the, the fact that there's so much confusion about this now, it's an uncertain landscape. My recommendation would be that you whatever decision was reached or not, that it be considered voided and that no work be performed by Davelier at this time. Until such time as we've had an opportunity to really get to the bottom of these issues. I, I would, I would hate to see this this decision move forward and, and potentially have unintended consequences that we can't predict at this point.
It's a safe.
I think it is, yes.
So the question is also, although Matt contributed to my campaign, my vote was to not hire Davelier and my motion is to disengage from that relationship. So can we move, so I'm, we are on opposite parts of this discussion. I didn't vote for Davelier. Um, but my motion is to do essentially what you're saying. How do you achieve that if you knock out two people? So my relationship with Matt McDonald was a, he's part of our Republican Central Committee and politically activated Christians. So I don't have any relationship with Davelier law firm. Right. But we have to move forward with a motion in order to remove what was done last week. And my argument was it wasn't clear. Commissioner Bradshaw told the community that we didn't actually hire, but the motion was to engage and he made that statement in an email. And so.
Yeah. So, so what I would, what I would recommend is, is at this point because the motion is to basically undo whatever was done before, I would say, go ahead and proceed with that.
Okay.
Do that. Um, and then that way we've kind of reset the clock back to zero and then we can take time to breathe and try to understand if there is something there that needs to be looked at. We can do that later. I would just not recommend moving forward at this time, given the uncertainty that we're dealing with. Is that better?
That sounds fantastic. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, if I may, um, I don't believe that I've received any money from Davelier Law, um, but what I would like to do, Mister Chairman, if I could, because I was the one who made the initial motion. I also attended the Idaho Association of Counties, uh, board training. And what I'd like to do for the general public is to present that so that there can be an understanding of what is actually. So that there can be an understanding of what is actually being. Asked by my motion, which is not to engage a law firm for legal counsel, but to engage a law firm. To provide a training program for our committee, so Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would. Like to entertain that so that I could present to the general public. The training that was received and then they could see why I'm trying to do this.
So Commissioner Ahmet. I would say, so we're trying to address a threshold issue right now of whether or not, whether it's legal or professional service, it's something of that, that nature. Before we can even get to the substance of what is being suggested, what, what is, would like to be offered. We have to address this other, this other underlying issue before you guys can, can even move on from that. So I guess if you're just, if, if it's a public service announcement to say, here's what I'd like to see, that's fine. But I would, I would recommend that the board stay focused on, on this underlying issue, resolve it first before we go into. The substance of what you're trying to accomplish.
So I, so, and I, I've tried to be clear in my conversations, and I will admit as I was. I have been admonished rightfully so for making a muddled motion, for which I apologize to the general public. I am also concerned if as a board, we start limiting. First Amendment rights of people and restricting their political speech. And I, I guess I'm, I'm curious whether it's Commissioner Williams accepting. A campaign contribution, does that qualify as a pecuniary interest? Because. As someone who's sitting up here, what I'm, what I'm struggling to understand, Mr. Wilson, is. George Wentz, Mauricio Cardona. And Matt McDonald's first amendment access to the hair republic. Is limited, and there was a Supreme Court case called Citizens United, where even. Corporations have access, and so I'm curious, in a county with only fifty two thousand people. And only a certain amount of lawyers is that the tact that we are saying here today is that. If an individual contributes of their own free will, the fruits of their labor. That then their employer cannot be utilized by county government? I have significant struggles with that.
I think for me, the difference is, one, this wasn't the county openly, transparently soliciting for something. This was a specific discussion that went from Davelier specifically discussed with both of the commissioners and the prosecutor's office. And then a decision was made off of that, so I don't think it's comparable to say. I, I have not hired Davelier for anything, however, a sitting commissioner has actually engaged their services. And so from the view of transparency, that's a valid concern. And so. That was only part of the reason to undo what has happened and I, it's not a matter of what training could happen, because what I was going to. When you go down that road, there was no recommendation from our own attorney to do this, they can provide this to us for free. Cause we're already paying them, so I don't, it's not in apples to apples to say Asia got a hundred dollars from Matt McDonald. And Bradshaw got four or five grand and hired them while he was running in for other issues, that's.
I've never hired him for anything.
That's, that's a completely different scenario.
Accurate.
I, I, I don't want to litigate those issues now.
For anything.
It, it, litigating those, those issues now is probably not, not fruitful, because we're trying to.
Game, but let's go back to the original motion.
So what we could do.
So it's dead in the water.
But no, because he's saying we have to make a decision, because if you leave the motion dead in the water, then it means you are still engaging, which is. Hiring the law firm, and so what is being said is we need to disengage, which is the motion. That I was trying to make is to disengage from the agreement to engage with Davelier Law Group to make a training program, that's the motion. And so what Bill is saying is we all can vote on that motion because it's untangling us from the problem. And then bring it back later if Commissioner Ahmet wants to make a case for something, right?
That is, that's my recommendation, yes.
So, but to be clear. I believe that our council is advising us, he is not directing us, the role of the Board of County Commissioners. Is to make these decisions.
Yeah.
And.
Hundred percent.
I'm, I'm just checking, so.
So I'll make the motion if you guys don't second it.
So. In regards to how I'm going to vote, I do appreciate the advice of council, I, I took the advice of council and I got beat up for two weeks legitimately. Because. I didn't, because I voted against Zoom, so now I have learned. To question decisions that are made, and as I was trying to bring forth, there's, there's an awful lot of council that is employed by this county. That does not reside in this county or the state. So I've, I've got some pretty good sized concerns, so. Could you please address my, the first amendment concern?
Totally, because I.
I will not vote for something that's taking away someone's first amendment rights, period.
Okay, so, so there's.
I don't know what's so funny, Mr. Bowman, I support them.
So here's, the, this, this is a discussion that I've had looking at the statute, because it does infringe on political speech. That, here's the problem, the statute is presumed constitutional. And so we, it's, it's probably not for, at least not, certainly not for me, and I wouldn't recommend for the Board of Commissioners either to unilaterally decide that a statute is unconstitutional based on your interpretation of the First Amendment. So. Although that, that could be a good argument to be raised at, down the road. If the statute was, if, you know, the statute was attempted to be applied for, you know, for penalties resulting from that, you could make that argument probably to a judge. But I wouldn't recommend just jumping to the conclusion that a statute violates the First Amendment. Because it was passed by the legislature and, and I don't think it's really, at this stage, that's at this level, it's appropriate for us to make that determination. We need to, we need to presume that the statute is lawful. So when the statute says that you cannot provide. Anything of pecuniary value to someone who is sitting in a discretionary decision for a contract that is going to be. For the, the giver is going to potentially benefit from, yeah, that, that in this case, it could have a, a chilling effect on political speech. But it's, I don't know if it's our position or authority to just unilaterally say that that's, you know. Violates the First Amendment and therefore we don't have to follow it, I, I certainly wouldn't recommend it to the board.
Thank you.
So to be made clear of what the motion.
I moved that Bonner County disengage Davelier Law Group to provide training services.
Your second.
Training law regarding open meeting law, thank you for letting me read your lips.
So can I vote?
So, for that purpose, I would say yes, I'd say yes, because you're, you're essentially going against, you know, the, the. The whole premise that you would. If there was a conflict of interest, that you'd be doing something to the benefit of Davelier to support that motion would be against that.
Down from the chair and second attempt. With the permission of my legal counsel.
Let's remove the second.
We have to call for a vote.
Roll call vote.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it is. Ten eighteen and we will recess for ten minutes and we will go into executive session upstairs.